But I think there are a lot of people in public life that are very unethical and that bothers me a lot.
Would you like to name any names?
Nope, I'm not gonna name. Listen, I know a lot of garbage about about other candidates and I have decided that that's not how I want to deal with it. I won't, I just won't. I, I, I know things about some of my fellow candidates that is not particularly good, but that's private. I will not.
Voters, voters deserve to know, David Wheeler. I think that's.
No, no. John, John, this is where you and I completely disagree. I, I was telling you about good boundaries and I have good boundaries. I have good boundaries and I.
I mean, if you, if you know things to be true that are.
No.
Alarming could, could be a bad sign about the people we're, we're voting for on our ballots in, in a couple of days. We should, we should know about it.
John, I'm sorry, I will not take that bait.
Okay.
We're rolling, we're rolling.
All in all, cap, 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 cap. This is a real, real, real thing, real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
How is the campaign going?
Well, we're, we're down to the final crunch and it, it feels, it's been feeling better and better day by day. And I, I think it's going to be a sense of relief for a lot of candidates come election day.
Including me, it's going to be a sense of relief for me to get past election day. I don't know how it's going to turn out. I don't know if I'm going to be happy with the result, but it's going to be a relief to have it over.
Well, I, I think it has been a long slog. There's no question about it. No question about it.
I'm going to introduce the show now. This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and today my guest is Ward 10 candidate for Minneapolis City Council, David Wheeler. David, thank you for joining me today.
Delighted to be here. Thanks so much for inviting me, John.
So you have a podcast too, don't you? I've, I've listened to a few episodes. How, how's your podcast going?
Oh, I've enjoyed it. I, and, and if successful, if I'm elected, then I'll keep doing some podcasts because I think it's one of the ways to communicate with, with, with a different audience. People are out for a jog, people are in their car. I mean, it's a way to touch bases. I just uploaded the most recent one and it's the 12th and the, and that's sort of the final one. And, and it's, uh, it's called The Closing Argument and, and that's about what it is. And they're about 10 minutes long. I don't, I don't go on a long time. I, as you probably know, most of my life I've been a, been a preacher. I made my living talking and Churchill said it best, I think, be brief, be witty and be seated. So I, I think, you know, when I preached, I was never more than about 15 minutes and my podcasts are actually a little shorter than that.
Well, we take the opposite approach. We do like a 90 minute podcasts, which I think is definitely too long. I think you have the right approach. I'll side with you on that one. But we, we just can't stop talking sometimes. So what, what is the closing argument for the David Wheeler campaign?
Well, I think the closing argument is that we have been through a whole bunch in these last year and a half, almost two years from the murder of Floyd and all that transpired from that. COVID, the lockdown, people going from being disrespectful to being even more so and actually sort of violent and angry, the way they, the way they drive, the way they talk, the way, you know, there's been just lots of stuff that's gone on. And I think it has to do with a lot with grief. There is a whole bunch of grief about things being different and things changing. One of the first pieces I put up on my words from Wheeler actually was a written piece that had to do with the grief tsunami. My, my grandmother died in the flu pandemic of 1918. Left my mother as a one-year-old with two older sisters. Her, her dad, my grandpa was a doctor. He could not save his 27-year-old wife who died in his arms. And he was a skillful doctor, but there was just no way to save with that, that terrible pandemic. And it cascaded down in my family and caused a lot of grief that has gone on now for, in the third generation. And I don't think we as a society have even figured out how deep the grief is going to be from the 640,000 people that have died so far and more that will die and how that impacts so many. And that's one of the things I talked about sort of right at the beginning of the campaign. So I, I think there's lots of things to deal with. I got involved, you know, I'm, I'm 69 years old. I'm not a kid anymore. I've had several people ask me, well, you know, I've, I've been told I'm a cranky old white guy. Well, I'm, I am an old white guy. Cranky, I'm not, never have been, never will be. I have strong opinions, but I'm not cranky. But I decided when many people at this stage in their life step aside and say, I've done enough, I'm going to give up and just go take care of myself. I took a look at where we were as a city, where we were as a society and as a country. And I said, you know, I'm just not going to sit on the sidelines. I'm going to step forward and do what I can. And I'm feeling really good about what I've been able to do and accomplish so far. I would say I stand a 30, 30%, 35% chance of, of winning. I won't be first in the first place votes, though I'll have a strong showing. I think I'll be very strong in the second and third place votes.
But, but how, how does electing David Wheeler fix our city's problems specifically?
The, the ability.
What does David Wheeler contribute to fixing? What are David Wheeler's ideas and contributions that he will make if elected to fix our city's problems specifically?
First and foremost is to build strong relationships with every single person on the council. Clearly it's a very fractured council. They have not behaved well together. They have not dealt with each other well and, and they have not taken a look at, at the bigger issues. So as a pastor, having served churches for 37 years, having run nonprofits, having done that kind of stuff, I know that you have to build strong working relationships with people, even those who disagree with you. And that hasn't happened on this particular council and it's quite divided. It's sort of a nine-four council is what it is. And I think there has to be some significant change. And I think I bring the skills and the abilities of having, had, having done this kind of work in terms of, of, of building relationships with, with people who don't always agree with me and figuring out ways to solve problems. So that, that has always been the very number one thing that I have felt has to happen. It doesn't have to do just with policies, although policies are important. There's no question about it. But I don't think if you cannot work together, if you cannot reason together, if you cannot take a look at the greater good, instead of just filling a special need in a special group for a few people, we're, we're never going to get there. And I believe that's a, that's a piece that I bring to the game. I also understand.
I've, I've heard the infighting thing and the, the idea that the council is dysfunctional, but a lot of things, maybe the vast majority of things are passing 12 to one, 11 to two, even controversial things, things you might think would be controversial, like the 2040 Plan or the Transportation Action Plan.
Right.
Uh, they're, they're passing with vast majorities. You might have Lisa Goodman hurling insults at Andrew Johnson occasionally, but I wouldn't say that this has been an ineffective council. I think it's been a, a policy-wise, a very effective council. And I don't think the infighting is necessarily the problem. What I, what I've noticed has been the problem over the last year and a half has been the police department, uh, which the mayor has complete power over. So let's talk about police and what, what you see is your role on the council, uh, contributing towards fixing our, our city's public safety issues.
There is no question that of all of the issues, when you knock on doors, when you talk to people, when you gather with them at a coffee shop, whatever, that's, that is front of mind for almost every person. It's, it's a question of community safety. It's a question of personal safety. Small businesses, others are, are, and individuals are, are just having a very rugged time. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's easy. I don't think it's quick. I think it's going to take a lot of very hard work. You know, some of this has to do, and I'm hoping we have a really great voter turnout, by the way. Uh, you know, we, we have a miserable record for municipal elections. It's about 30%, which Minnesota is about 70% in big elections, but municipal elections, Minneapolis has not done well. And I'm expecting we're going to have a much higher turnout at this, this election. It was only about, about 6,000 votes or so that elected Lisa Bender last time, six and a half thousand. I mean, it wasn't a huge number of votes. I think we're going to see well over 10 to 12,000 votes or more in this ward, in, in this race. So you're right, the police department is sort of the number one thing. And some of this will be decided on whether or not that the second, uh, Charter Amendment is passed. If it passes, uh, the, there's going to be a lot of fast work to do. If it doesn't pass, and I don't believe it's going to pass, by the way, I, I, I'm pretty much convinced it will not pass.
Do you think it'll pass in Ward 10? Like, do you think it'll get the majority of votes in Ward 10?
I think it'll be close in Ward 10. We've taken a look at who's already done early voting and mostly early voting has been done by older people and older people will generally, not always, but older people generally will not be as positive on yes for Minneapolis. They will, they will vote no. And incidentally, I think both sides are sort of going at it a little bit wrong, but that's what they're doing. It's they've, you know, they politicized it and it is a political piece and I'm, I'm, I'm a no, a strong no for it. But if it passes, then, then there's going to be a lot of very hard work to do. But even if it doesn't pass, there's a lot of hard work to do. We, there's a couple of things that I think are vitally important. One is we need different kinds of police officers than we've had. It's been my hope that those who have stepped aside this last year, which is almost a third of the force, many of them were people that did not want to stand up to scrutiny. There's some very good officers that have stepped aside and there's some that were probably not so good. We have a terrible history of violence and racism in our police department. There, it's gone on for over a hundred years. That is not excusable. That cannot continue. We have to change state laws and some other sorts of things so that we can, uh, discipline and remove bad actors. No question in my mind, and I've been, I've been saying that from the beginning. We have to.
How do you, how do you do that if you, if the city council has no policy control over police? Are, aren't you just trusting? Isn't this, is essentially what you're saying? We have to trust the mayor and the chief to do this? Cause what role does the city council play in that if question two doesn't pass, which, which you've said you oppose?
The discipline and of officers and the removal of officers who have been protected for generations by the Fed, by the, the police federation, the police union. They, they have, they, we've got to go to the state legislature to make that happen and change because we, we, we will not have control unless something happens there. Do I trust the mayor? Do I trust the chief? I trust the chief a lot. Uh, I think the mayor has done, uh, as good a job as he can. He had to, he had to deal with some awful things. I don't, I think deep down, I think Jacob would admit that things did not go well for him or didn't go well for the governor, or certainly things did not go well for the citizens of Minneapolis and, and for the, the, the people whose lives have been so disrupted by, by, by violence. It's, it's pretty much tragic. Not pretty much, it is completely tragic. So do I trust? I trust, I do trust Arredondo. I, I think, I think he is an honorable man and, uh, I think he's got plans and wants to do things. I think there have been all sorts of things that have held that up. Do I think 13 city council members and the mayor will do a better job? It's why when I first ran into you and we chatted that first time, I said, I'm a strong supporter of the executive mayor and the strong mayor system. And I said that, and it has nothing to do with taking away power from the council. The council will always have power. Their power in almost every great city in America has to do with legislating. And you can override a veto of a mayor. There's no problem. Council, I, we did that in Duluth where we have a strong mayor system. St. Paul has a strong mayor system. I don't, I, and, and to me, it's just makes sense to have the executive do the, do the executive part and the, and the council do the legislative part.
I did, I did think it was odd. So you introduced yourself and we had a nice conversation. The first thing you said was about how passionate you were to be running for city council. And so it occurred to me to ask, uh, so what specifically are you passionate about? And the first thing you mentioned was the question one, the strong mayor thing, which, I don't know, from my perspective is about, uh, taking power away from the council, concentrating power in the mayor's office in a way that I think incredibly be said is something the mayor can use to bully the council. You don't, you don't support my agenda. I will just deny you access to department staff.
But we've lost, you know, the other thing, John, that's happened is we have lost some really good people who have been department staff and they, they, they left because they were getting conflicting information from lots of people. The system.
Who left because of that?
Um, let's see, there's been turnover, uh, in the coordinator, coordinator's office, though I think that was a slightly different situation. There has been turnover in, in the, uh, in a couple of other departments. If you take a look at what's happened in the last two or three years, a number of people have left. They, they just decided.
The, the Public Works Department Director left. You take a job in the Biden administration. So, I mean, I, I would just like examples of people who, who left and that was the reason that they left. Cause I, I hear this said a lot.
Well, there, there, there have certainly been, been rumblings from, from, from staff and I, you know, uh, I, I'm, those are the two that I'm aware of, but I think there, there, I think there have been some others and I, I just know there has been more turnover in the last year or two than, than before. But that's fine. We don't have to agree on that. I, I think it's okay not to agree on things.
Yeah. Yeah. So going back to the question one thing, I just, and in addition to our disagreement on the substance of question one, I thought it was an odd thing for you to list as the thing first, as the thing you're passionate about. You're running for city council. I just thought that was an odd thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Cause I care, I care a lot about policy and I, I kind of want a Ward 10 rep who, who cares about policy and making specific changes. It was one of the things I noticed about your campaign in the beginning, went a long time without any policy ideas on your website. And so I just, I just wanted to get a sense of David Wheeler's policy agenda.
You, you, you want me to respond to that stuff?
Yeah.
There has been substance on the website from when it went up in January and it is, it has had more added to it as time has gone on. There have been a, a number of debates and conversations, I would say. They're not really debates, they were forums. I, I really am sorry we never had any, any real debates because I really like face-to-face debates with, with an audience and all that kind of stuff. I, I feel always handicapped when I'm, when I'm on a screen and not with people because I think it's, it works to be with people. I think that, I mean, that there's a whole variety of things. For instance, I don't think there are many people on the council that have significant understanding of the budget and financial matters. There was a council member who will remain unnamed, who could not believe that the city of Minneapolis had a $1.5 billion budget. They did not think that.
Alondra, are we talking about Alondra?
I, I'm not going to say who it is, but I, I was just absolutely amazed that, that that, um, that, that statement came out for somebody who had, who had been on the council. And I don't think they, a lot of people care about the financial pieces and it's a, it's a huge issue. Frankly, we're, we're being bailed out by the federal government for the next few years. But, but that, that, that has helped to smooth things out, but it's, it's going to be tough going when, when that money dries up within three years. And we have to make sure that we have a strong enough economy to support all the things that, that we, we value as, as a society. I think, uh, I'm a strong believer in, uh, I mean, I really liked the piece about mental health that's in, that's in the yes for Minneapolis. That mental health piece is important. My mother was a clinical psychologist and, and I've always valued, uh, uh, good, good mental health stuff. And I don't, and police generally are not well-equipped to deal with that. A few of them are, and I've, I've met one or two that are, but most of them are not. I think that's where we, where we have, what are there, 20, 20-some people are being, oh, I think it's more than that, 36 people being hired by Hennepin County for the $20 million that are mental health workers, uh, you know, and, and Minneapolis isn't Hennepin County, so we'll be making use of that. I don't think the city has to invent all its own stuff. I think we can make use of stuff that the county does. We have tremendous nonprofits like NAMI and I've had NAMI on my website for a long time, NAMI Minnesota, that the, the mental health organization that does great work. We need to count on nonprofits and faith groups and others in addition to government to solve a lot of these problems around, around mental health, around homelessness. There, there was a beautiful write-up just recently about Simpson Housing Services having received a three and a half million from the county and three and a half million from the, from, from the city. I've, I've worked with Simpson Housing Services over the years. It's an old Simpson United Methodist Church that is no longer working as a church, but they, they have been doing, uh, really amazing work for a long time. And now they're going to be able to expand their ability to, to help find housing for people and, and do that kind of stuff. I think that's, that's a critical issue. That isn't a police issue. Homelessness shouldn't be a police issue. I, uh, if, if, if somebody has a weapon and there's so many illegal guns running around the city, I mean, it's really crazy. You know, years ago.
I wonder, could I, could I follow up on the mental health stuff? I wonder if you believe that, uh, this is related to question two. I wonder if you think that stuff like mental health, excuse me, I wonder if you think that stuff like.
John, I know I do that, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So I wonder if you think stuff like mental health services, uh, those alternatives to police should be integrated into a department of public safety. I know the mayor has said he supports that. He's also said he supports, uh, removing the minimum number from the charter. I wonder if you would agree with the mayor that the, at least those parts of question two are a good idea?
Well, the mental health thing absolutely for sure. And I, and I just don't know if we're going to be able, no matter what happens, we'll be able to get the department numbers back to what, what was in the charter. I, I, I'm just not sure that's going to happen.
No, the, so my question was, do you, so the mayor has said he supports removing the minimum number of officers from this charter. He says it doesn't belong in the charter. It should be set through the normal budget process. I wonder if you think would also agree that it should be set through the normal budget process?
I, I think it makes sense. Yes, I do. However, we are still down a third of the force and, and we need to replenish at least 150 officers and it's going to take years. See, people don't realize that police officers don't sort of grow on trees. They, they take a lot of training, a lot of time. And, and frankly, uh, many officers have, 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 have gone to suburban places to, to be police officers because of the extra demands that are placed in the city. I've also advocated right from the beginning and in Duluth, we used to have a law statewide and the legislature got rid of it, but you, you had to live in the city to be a police officer. Well, we can't require that anymore. It's not allowed. But I do believe in, in providing incentives because I think the best policing happens with people that live right in the community, that is part, that are part of the community and that know the community. And, and so community policing is something that, that I value and I think we have to figure out how to provide incentives for officers because it is more expensive to live in the city. I, I, there's just no question about it. But a lot of us choose to do that because we love the city and, and what it offers.
Right. So when I, when I think about, uh, the MPD falling apart over the last year and a half, do you have a sense, talking to voters, if people understand that the police department wasn't, from a staffing perspective, was not defunded? Like the city council has agreed to all the hiring that the mayor has requested, funding for overtime, funding to bring in police from outside agencies. In your conversations with voters, do you think people understand that, uh, you know, we've had hundreds of cops just quit and then it wasn't a function of budget cuts? Cause I, I think that's a big misunderstanding, uh, in the conversations we have about public safety.
That's, that is a valid point. I think people, uh, because of those nine council members that stood in front of that sign that said, defund police, that was such a powerful visual image that was used all over the country, actually. And, uh, not, not, not to the advantage of those of us who have strong social consciences and, and, and want equity and stuff. It, 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 it makes most people think, well, uh, no, there, there are fewer cops because it's difficult to be a policeman because they, because, uh, there was, there was a little money that was set aside that was pulled out of the budget and the council then was able to put some of it back. But I don't think people understand the subtleties of that. No, I, I, I don't think that's, I, I agree with you on that. Gosh, John, you and I are agreeing.
Yeah, we, we do, we agree on some facts here. That's important. I think it's important to agree on the facts when you are, uh, before you start talking about how to solve the problems, you should agree on the facts of the problem.
I agree. Yeah.
So let's talk about, one of, one of the things I've noticed about you, David Wheeler, is that you don't pander to, I don't know what to call them, uh, the, the typical NIMBY attitude on transportation at least. Like you will, you will say it's important for people to, to drive less in Minneapolis, you know? I, I don't think we should force people out of our cars. That's how it's framed a lot of times, you're forcing me not to drive. No, we're just providing options for people who would like to be able to choose not to drive. It's one of the reasons I live in the wedge is that I'm close to grocery stores. I can bike and take the bus places. And so I have appreciated that at least. I, I find you different from the other two. I'm going to call them conservative candidates, David Wheeler. I'm sorry. That's the only way I'm able to orient myself in Minneapolis politics. We've got, we've got a left and a right, but you differentiated yourself in that regard on transportation. So that, those are my words of appreciation for you.
Well, and I appreciate those words of appreciation and I appreciate the fact that, that, that you and David Brower listed me third. I think that was, that was wonderful. I, I appreciate that actually a whole much. See, I was a city council member before. I have dealt with transportation issues for a long time. Not only did I deal with, uh, I was on the Seaway Port Authority in Duluth for a while. And so that, that was big transit, you know, with the, with these big ore ships. But I've also been involved in, in traffic calming and, and 21st Avenue East in Duluth. If you've ever been up, it goes up, it's very, quite steep. It goes up to UMB, the University of Minnesota, right from, right from London Road, right, right from down from the freeway, actually. And that was a four-lane road and there were, there was, there were terrible accidents. There were pedestrians being killed. And I have recommended to the, to the city transportation department that let's try to do three lanes there where we have a turning lane in the middle. And they said, oh no, we can't do that. It won't work. It's, it's four lanes. We need all that traffic. Well, they actually tried it as a test where they, they painted lines on. Turns out, uh, there have been no, there were no deaths that happened after that for some years. I don't know if there's been one since then, but there weren't when, when I was on the council. Turns out it handled all the same traffic. It did not push stuff off into the neighborhoods because all of the neighborhood people were concerned, oh, it's going to push lots of cars into our neighborhood and we won't like that. It didn't and it reduced pollution. The air level quality went up. So we have to be able to think about transportation a different way. And one of the pieces I have said and, and said quite a few times is we are in a transition between what is today and what will be 10 years from now. And that is awkward time because we're, we're not quite, we're not there. There are going to be fewer cars in the future. There's absolutely no question. We have to do charging stations for electric vehicles. We, there's a lot of stuff that has to happen. But, um, I'm, I'm a believer that we need a, a whole variety of ways to move people around. And I think what's going to happen with, with, uh, our older population that are still so tied to their cars is that the, the, the transportation of the future, people will pick up their, will pick up their iPhone, whether it's, whether it's an iPhone or an Android and they will call a vehicle to come pick them up and take them grocery shopping, you know, and, and it'll be autonomous. Those are going to be around five to 10 years from now, but we're in that awkward time in between. And I do believe that small businesses still need to have a place for, for people to park. We need to be able to encourage people to drive in from the suburbs and use our, use our, our, our city. And, and they are so tied to their cars. They have no other way of doing it. So I think we have to find sort of a balance and I think it's going to be very different 10 years from now. That's why I say we're in a transitional phase, which is very awkward.
How do you, how do you feel about the city's transportation action plan? Do you think it was a good idea? You support it? Would you have voted for it?
Um, I think most of it makes sense. I think, you know, part of, part of the, all of the, the transportation and development is that we we're not doing real density anywhere. And for transit to work well, you need large groups of people who are next to transit and who will be using it on a regular basis. So I I I think most of it makes sense. You know, I, there's not a hotter issue in the in my part of the ward than Bryant Avenue. And I live right on Bryant Avenue, as do a couple other candidates. And and it's, people have very, very strong opinions about it. And I'm a believer that it's really good to have plans, but you've got to listen. And it's got to come from the bottom up, not from not from the planning department down. And I think there's been an awful lot of stuff, including a building that's right next door to me that had all sorts of exceptions made for it. And and I I believe that that variances ought to be the exception, not the rule, and they become more the rule. So there there's a lot of stuff around around planning and transportation and housing. And I mean, it's a it's a huge, huge amount of responsibility. And and I don't say I have all the answers or know all the answers. But I know how to find them. I know who to talk to. I know I know how to listen to people. And I think we have to fix our planning process. And again, COVID just absolutely threw a wrench into into the engagement that we were so used to in the past.
Do you have any Carol Becker stories to tell me? I you know, Carol Becker and I have a I don't know, a history?
Yes.
I have that. I have very bad feelings about Carol Becker. I'm sure she has probably more bad feelings about me based on her behavior in the past.
You know, I'm not going to jump.
You have any stories, juicy stories you can tell us?
Tell you my story with Carol. When I first ran 12 years ago for Board of Estment Taxation, she was totally convinced that I was a shill for RT Ryback and that I wanted I wanted to end the Board of Estment Taxation. Well, I'm I'm a shill for nobody, never have been, ever will be. That's just not my nature, my style. It's not how I'm put together. But so she she ran several candidates against me. She showed up at my fundraisers. There were a whole bunch of things that, you know, were really pretty awkward. And but I just I I just let Carol be Carol and kept going on. So once the election was over and I was elected, we sat down and figured out how to work together. We don't always agree, never have, never will. But we came to an understanding that she was good at some things and I was good at other things. She would dig into the details and I would would keep things sort of calm and take a big, big view picture. So we got along very well over the course, and it just got better and better and better. Now, do we have a close, wonderful friendship and working relationship? Not necessarily. But we got to the point where we could respect each other. And it's the reason that I think I would be great on the Minneapolis City Council is if I can sit down and work with somebody who opposed me and build a relationship so that we could work together on behalf of the citizens of Minneapolis, that I can do that on the council level. It's one of the things that that made me decide to run.
You could start instead of your campaign t-shirts, you could start wearing t-shirts that say, I survived Carol Becker. You could do that.
I'll 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 leave that for you. I'll leave that for you. I don't have I have almost no personal animus. It's just not how I function.
Not even against me. I've tweeted. I've tweeted. I've made fun of you on Twitter, David Wheeler. You don't have any animus?
No, I've actually had fun. I thought some of the stuff you did was hilarious. And that doesn't bother me. I'm I'm not I'm very thick-skinned. Listen, I was a pastor where I had to work with with parishioners. I had to work with church councils. I've been an elected public official for almost 16 years. I've been a public person. I've I've had to go through a lot. And it's it's one of the reasons why I decided to run, because I have the temperament that is needed on the city council.
I want to ask you about the BET, something specific that happened. And so do you remember the Target Center debt refinancing issue from a couple of years ago? Where I think Carol held it up and and pandered. I think Fox nine cameras were there and she voted against it. And the story on Fox nine made it look as though she was voting against a giveaway to a billionaire when what it was really about was refinancing the debt, getting the city a better deal. I think you took, did you you supported refinancing the debt, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So what was your reaction to that? I think you did the right thing there. What was your reaction to to Carol doing that?
I don't remember any strong reaction. I just I I I remember I actually, I didn't have a strong reaction to it. She she was outvoted. And and so that wasn't a problem.
I think she held it up by a month, though, because he didn't have enough votes to to override her vote against. I think it held it up by a month, doing the right thing, because she wanted to get on TV looking like she was standing up to billionaires when that's not what was happening.
Well, I I think you you and Carol have some issues, certainly.
I'm grinding an axe. Admittedly, I'm grinding an axe here, and we can move on. You don't have to respond. I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, no, that was what what I'm really pleased about is that we we have had some very good advice to the Board of Estment Taxation over the years. We had a staff person Qualley, Kevin, not Kevin Qualley, but Jack Qualley, who was there for 37 years. And and literally, in 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 many of the years that I've served on, we ended up saving the taxpayer millions of dollars of interest because of the the what happened to bonds and the refinancing of stuff. And I I I think that has been just a real plus for the city of Minneapolis. And of course, both Carol and I are going off. So her, in her case, 16 years, my case, 12. And and we've got new people coming up, and I I hope we've got some good people. I the other couple of things I feel really good about the Board of Estment Taxation was that when Jack retired, first of all, he hadn't had a review for 20 years. And I had it up with review. We did a review of Jack and and he had he had a pretty good review and a couple of things that we thought he should do differently. But when Jack retired, we had to find a new staff person. And I worked closely with Abdi Warsami and 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 a couple others, and we hired a really good person. In fact, he was so good that the city hired him away from the Board of Estment Taxation. So we had to go out and and hire one more person. So I feel really good that we have a part-time person who's doing that job right now. We also increased the you know, we were paid $35 a meeting, which was set in the 70s. And and now with the amount of work you we put in, it's probably 10 to 20 hours a month, and we increased the the amount to $400 a month, which is still a lot less than if you'd done the dollar inflation from when they were paid $10 a meeting back in 1905. But anyway, that is another thing we did. So I I I feel that we've left the Board of Estment Taxation in in good hands with Tony Stirl, who is the who is the 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 new staff person. He's he's outstanding.
So moving back to your campaign for city council, if you win, what committee would you like to serve on?
I would like to chair the Ways and Means Committee. I was the finance chair in Duluth and I I'm not a finance genius, but I understand how how finance works and how money works. And I think that's probably a very, I know it's a very, very significant committee, and that's where I would like to be. Because I think I have, I I could offer some stuff. I think there's a couple other people that would be very good in that role, too. But Abdi Warsami was wonderful. And when he left, they they didn't actually sort of refill it. So but that's where I that that was the committee I would like to be on. But I'm interested in lots of issues, but that that in particular.
How are you ranking your ballot? I'm assuming you're ranking David Wheeler, number one. How are you ranking your second and third slots?
That'll that'll be between my ballot and me. But I
You're not running as a team? You're not running as a three-person team with anyone?
Well, we're we're teaming up in some ways, exactly. But I I I I have talked to the candidates that will be getting my my second, third vote, and that's how I choose to do it.
You don't want to give them a shout out? You don't want to make make nice with their supporters?
Well, I have have spent lots of time talking and working with Alicia and less with Chris. But those are the those are the two that I know the best. And we're in agreement on lots of the issues and and we disagree on some others. And what what's funny about me, you you'd said this, and I just laughed, is that I'm being portrayed as a conservative. And and it just makes me laugh because my whole life I've been on the, you know, the the cutting edge of what we used to call progressive or liberal politics. And and compared to what's going on in Minneapolis now, I I I seem like I'm way off to the right, and I I'm certainly not.
It's all relative. It's all relative. I'll I'll live long enough that I'll become a conservative, David Wheeler. I promise you. It's all relative. It's Minneapolis, doesn't it? You don't have to veer too far right to become a conservative. How do you feel about, did you see that the mayor's PAC has raised $1.6 million from business interests? Are you comfortable with that? The mayor, so all of Minneapolis is a a political committee run by the mayor's former communications staff person, who is also married to a a current policy aide to the mayor. They've raised $1.6 million, spending it parallel to the mayor's campaign in support of the mayor and supportive, I think you, I think you showed up on a mailer recently to me. Are you comfortable with all that money being poured into this election?
Well, I don't really like outside groups contributing huge amounts of money to issues here in Minneapolis. If it's raised locally, I'm not as concerned about it. If it's funds are coming from outside of Minnesota, outside of Minneapolis, I'm not as comfortable with it. But yeah, they it's our our whole political system is so dependent on money. This 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 is the the six candidates that filed their reports today for campaign contributions and the cash balance that started the year, the new cash and the total cash available. Chuck Di had had about 113,000 cash available. Gibson had about 49,000 cash available. Jones had close to, as you probably know this, close to $60,000 cash available. Parsons had almost $76,000 cash available. And I had about $47,000 cash available.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. Chuck Di spent over $100,000. A lot of those are unpaid staff. Sort of curious that that Parsons ended up the ending balance. He only had a less over $1,000.
Yeah, he seems to be spending the money as it comes in.
Yeah. And and
gotten a lot of big mailers from Chris Parsons recently. So I could I could tell that he was raising a lot more money than he had previously, just by the size and frequency of the mailers I was getting. He's getting a lot of firefighter union money from here in Minnesota and across the country, too.
Yeah, he's getting, he's getting, and he's, yeah, yes, I would, I would agree. That's 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 part of what's going on.
And so are you, will you denounce and reject the support of the mayor's PAC, all of Minneapolis? Are you willing to do that?
No, I I'm not. I'm not willing to denounce it. I just like I'm I haven't denounced the outside money that's come in for, yes, for Minneapolis. I I
They're not spending on candidates, though. All of Minneapolis is spending on candidates, including you.
Well, they they did a mailer, and I was one of three people. So I guess it was it was helpful, I suppose, to some degree. I don't know. I I I didn't, I I didn't know about it till it arrived in my mailbox. So.
Do you think it looks like the mayor is coordinating with this this campaign? Because his former communications staffer is on it. They've received money from the mayor's campaign. It looks like a coordinated campaign to me.
It's illegal for it to be coordinated, so it shouldn't be coordinated. And and I I would think that people would be pretty careful to to keep boundaries. I think this is one of the pieces that is so wrong with our society now is we have, we don't have good boundaries anymore. We don't, we we don't have good personal boundaries. We don't have good political boundaries. I think people, people need to own what they do. And I think people need to be ethical about what they do. Am I perfectly ethical all the time? I've I've made some mistakes. I I confess, we all have. But I think there are a lot of people in public life that are very unethical, and that bothers me a lot.
Would you like to name any names?
Nope. I'm not gonna name. Listen, I know a lot of garbage about about other candidates. And I have decided that that's not how I want to deal with it. I won't. I just won't. I I I know things about some of my fellow candidates that is not particularly good, but that's private. I will not talk.
Voters deserve to know, David Wheeler. I think that's
No, no. John, John, this is where you and I completely disagree. I I was telling you about good boundaries, and I have good boundaries. I have good boundaries. And I
I mean, if you if you know things to be true that are
No.
alarming, could could be a bad sign about the people we're we're voting for on our ballots in in a couple of days. We should we should know about it.
John, I'm sorry. I will not take that bait.
Okay. I didn't think it was that tempting, but is it really? Is it really? We we don't have to say what it is. Is it really bad stuff? Would it make headlines in the newspaper?
Yeah, I it might or might not. It is it's more personal stuff. So I I
It's not about Mickey Moore, right? It's not about Mickey Moore. Have you been following that saga?
Oh, my goodness. Yes. Yes, I saga might be a good way to to put it. Yeah.
I was I was disappointed in the Star Tribune, just walking right into that one. You could see it coming from a mile away. Oh, David, I I feel bad asking this, but I kind of have to. You were touting the Star Tribune's write-up of Ward 10. They endorsed another candidate, but you you did a little ellipses thing where you took out the word also. And it made your, it made your friends look like you would receive the endorsement. You fooled your Facebook friends into thinking you got the endorsement.
I know. No, that it was completely clear that I said it was breaking news. This is what they said. I did not change a single word in it. I did not say anything about endorsement. I did not.
You didn't link to the story, though.
I did not.
Link to it.
Well, people people got it. They were able to see it, and that's fine.
All the replies were like, congratulations on the endorsement, David.
There were a couple that said that, yes. And others, other others were understood the difference.
It could have helped them understand if you had linked to the endorsement, though. You just included a picture of the Star Tribune logo and a quote from it that that
The words that they
Deleted the word also.
The words they wrote about me. That's all I did. And that's fine. That's okay.
I feel like I feel like I've held your feet to the fire on this one, so we can move on.
Well, you can, but I I I I stand by what I did, and I think it was just fine. Yeah.
Okay. It probably won't make headline news. There's bigger scandals in Minneapolis than
Oh, yeah. It was very nice to get, you know, they endorsed me three other times. So this is this is the fourth time they didn't endorse me. But they
For BET, though, you probably didn't have opponents back then.
Oh, yeah. There were six who ran the first time. So it's some of those that that were were put up to run against me. But, you know, I I felt very good about what they said. And and it was true. And so that's why I I, to me, it was breaking news. And and other others may be misinterpreted. I know you you went after me on it. That's okay. I again, I stand behind it. I I think it was just fine.
You have a thick skin, David. You can take me needling you about your misleading your Facebook friends. That's okay. So is there anything else we should cover before I get into the final question? Have we missed anything? You have a closing pitch?
No, you can use your final question, and I'll I'll maybe have a word or two at the end.
Oh, you want to have the final word?
Well, you know, I spent my life doing the benediction.
Okay. We'll see. We'll see how it goes. I don't know if I'm going to give you a final word. I usually have a final word. It's my podcast.
It is your podcast. I agree.
Okay, before I get to the final question.
I'm really pleased that you invited me to to be on this, by the way. Thank you.
I'm pleased that you showed up. It shows great personal courage. I call this the lion's den. That's what I call this. So you've come into the lion's den.
I have a bit of a mane, don't I?
Right. We see, we're going to see who's the top lion is. So you remember that early candidate forum? This is not the final question because I just thought of this. People were doing the thumbs down gesture to one of your answers. Do you remember that?
Oh, boy. I'll never forget it.
And then you scolded them. I think that might be the origin of the cranky old guy thing, which is totally unfair. We've had a nice conversation here today. But how did you feel when the people were doing the the thumbs down thing?
I thought it was exactly the lack of boundaries and the lack of respect and something that was completely unnecessary. And this is the thing that happened, happens with with Zoom and people not being in front of each other live and having conversations and having debates. And I I I got, can't tell you how many kudos I got for my reaction to it. That I that I said, that's this bad behavior. Just don't do that. And and it was, it was bad behavior.
I enjoyed, I enjoyed your reaction because it wouldn't have been worth clipping without your admonishment following the thumbs down.
Yep, the cranky old man. Please don't put your fingers like that. I I think that's really very rude. Please don't put your fingers like that. I, I think that's really very rude. Uh, you're supposed to be list, but don't, don't do this, please.
Okay, this is the final question. It's been, it's been a rough year and a half. I, I don't know if you've enjoyed running for office. If it's making you happy, maybe it is. This election is kind of depressing me. I don't feel good. I, I feel bad all the time. So what are three things that are brightening your mood during this terrible election year? It could be a walk in a specific place, a person, an experience, a book, a movie, a song. Just, uh, what would you recommend to people to, that would brighten their mood? Three things.
That's a really, really great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live near the parks in East Harriet. And most weeks I take two or three walks over there. I used to take my old Labrador Retriever, who now is gotten too old to walk that far. But Edward and I walk over there quite often, take pictures of flowers, just listen, see things, go to the, go to the peace garden. That's where I taped my very first video when I ran 12 years ago uh, for the Board of Estment and Taxation. It's to me, it's a very, it's a very magical place. I, the second thing that is helped me is that I have people that have been supporting me and walking with me and working with me in this campaign. And I want to give a special shout out to Ryan Berquist, who is my campaign manager. He's in his, he's just turned 27. He's bright. He's capable. He knows how to stand up to me because I can, I can be a little, little strong-willed at times and, and, and he says, David, don't, you listen to me. And I, I have real appreciation. One of the things I have given up is I tried to control so many things. I have a video team that is, the, the last video just, just was released today. Actually yesterday, but it's, it's, it's making the rounds today. It's called, it's called the, you know, the closing argument. And it's 70 seconds long, shot down at City Hall. I always used to sit over the shoulders of my video people and told them what to do. I gave up on that. I let go and let people do their things. And the final thing, um, I'm really excited about going back to, to the Minnesota Orchestra that I've had season tickets at for years. I used to work selling tickets for them. And the Guthrie Theater. Those are, those are two places. Well, that and the MIA, right in our ward, the Minneapolis Institute of Rights. Those, those are the things that, that nurture my soul a lot. And I'm grateful for that. But what I, what I want to add to this is that I'm really grateful for having this opportunity to run. Because I, I feel really good about the level of the campaign, about the issues I've addressed, the people I've talked to. Uh, I, I feel like I've been part of the conversation and have maybe improved some of the conversation. And you know, I'm thinking I have a 35% chance of winning. That's maybe a little optimistic, but you know, I think I'll end up third in the first place votes. And when the second, third place votes come in, that's the piece that's going to power me. Now, I, it may not happen. But I still feel really good about having given up. And it's a lot you give up to run for office. Since January, I've had two days away, two days away when I went to my 50th high school reunion, which was on the 51st year. But I feel really good about running this campaign. I feel really good about interacting with people. I feel really that we've, we've used the about $50,000 I've raised. I only wanted to raise 30,000. I didn't want 50,000. I didn't want to spend that much money. And God, there are people that have spent over a hundred thousand bucks. It's just amazing to me. So I feel good about what's happened and, and I want more than anything else for our city to come together. For us to solve the problems, for us to offer the hope and the promise that has always been part of, of Minneapolis. And it hasn't been a part for, for all the people. And it needs to be for all of our residents. So thank you for having me on. I appreciate this so much.
Thank you, David Wheeler. That's the first time a guest has muscled in to do a final word like that. So thank you for uh, you know, expressing your dominance over me, I guess.
No, I feel it, it isn't that.
It was a joke, David. It's okay. It's, it was just a joke.
I just think, I just think it I, I've, I've had a lot of feelings of gratitude this week. I'm, I'm not, I'm not doing my full-time job. I'm, I'm going to coffee shops. I'm meeting with people. I'm working on things and I'm, I'm running from now to the end and we'll know Wednesday, I think the third is what, what, what we'll have our final answer. So.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking forward to it being over. Thank you for joining me, David Wheeler. I, I apologize for all of my jokes that uh, that if they made you feel bad, I don't think they made you feel bad. You've got a thick skin. You're a tough guy.
They didn't make me feel bad. In fact, I always told them. I, I actually, literally, I started to laugh when I, that picture, that picture of me by the, with, with the Honda and I was, I was doing the, the phone for the, to park the car. And.
I saw you across the street.
It was great. It was wonderful. I love the image.
It's all going to be over soon. My guest has been David Wheeler, running for city council in Ward 10 in Minneapolis. And I'm your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Life Podcast.